I've got an order at seven o'clock. It's about a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Much happy to have visitors. This is for Linda. Has anyone signed up for this?
No.
Sure, I wasn't aware that there was a signing. I don't know what the signing party was.
It's a form if you want to speak.
You can speak first.
And then just announce.
I think I don't want the pressure in front of this gentleman. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Roy Davenport, and I'm not a member of your local community, but I'm a neighbor of Denton County. And I appreciate y'all being speak. I'll try to be brief. I don't know if you have a time limit. I'm like a Megad repairman. I don't soapbox a lot, so I tend to ramble on. So any wink or waver or nod, and I'll try to hush. I'm here today to visit with you real briefly. I noticed your agenda posting online, and I'm not a political person per se, but I'd like to follow local government because, you know, I'm interested in local politics, local government. I noticed in October of 2019, the town of Lakewood Village passed an ordinance, the candidate forums on electioneering. And it states that the ordinance was adopted to ensure fair and equal access to candidates. And in reading the ordinance on your website, some of the dates, March 10th, I think is mentioned, and the language kind of lends itself to make me believe, as a layperson, that it was written to address, you know, your town elections, the council elections, mayoral elections, what have you. It wasn't necessarily drafted to cover all elections. But again, it was adopted to ensure fair and equal access to candidates. I noticed on your agenda posting item six, discussion with Ryan Williams on Denton County precinct one. Ryan Williams is a political candidate for office in Denton County. And I think that hosting political speech in a public forum such as this without a fair and balanced position like you tried to provide for in your ordinance, you're offering a one-sided view. You're offering an opportunity for a candidate to make political speech at public expense. And I'm not an attorney, and I don't practice law. I've met Mr. Williams very recently. He seems like a fine man. I'm not here to cast exposures on Mr. Williams. We have a lot of similarities in our background. He honorably served in the military. And I'm also a vet, and I've fought the service. A single-digit percentage of people have served in the military these days. And I don't wear the flag on my hat or hold myself out as being someone special. It's just something I get. Mr. Williams has served. He said to me in a personal conversation, 17 years as a volunteer law enforcement officer. I think that's a lot of it. I think that's, you know, outstanding that he has the time and effort to donate to his community to make the place better and safer. I too have served as law enforcement officer. I have an honorably retired peace officer after 30 years of service. And so again, I think the guy's great for working. I'm not an attorney, but I've had to follow the law throughout the course of my career and since my retirement. And, you know, there's a saying, it's a quote from a poem, but the short take on it is ignorance is bliss. And he goes on. But ignorance of the law is really no defense. And I think that the law, you have counsel there. And I won't speak. I won't quote chapter and verse, but you do have counsel. And I think that political advertising, or campaign communications, political expenditures, public funds for political advertising, all those kind of things, you know, calls the question, is there a reason that one candidate for an office is allowed to make political speech on town dime, if you will? And it just does not seem to be a fair and equitable situation. And I'm not here to criticize the situation. I just want to call your attention to the fact that inadvertently perhaps you're risking exposure on the part of the town and on the part of yourselves individually by an action that's inadvertent perhaps, but is perhaps in violation of the election code or some other code, there's myriad codes. But I think that the Texas Commission of Ethics, you know, has a circumstance, and political speech, campaign speech, there is an appropriate forum. But I think a one-sided view coming from a candidate without the opposition candidate, if you will, having an opportunity to voice their concerns is probably not the appropriate thing to pursue.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else want to?
No.
Next up, we have a public hearing scheduled by an opportunity for citizen comment on a petition filed by Sanctuary Texas LLC requesting creation of a public improvement district number one.
Mr. Green?
Mr. Green?
Tim Green.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmember. My name is Tim Green. I'm an attorney with the Coats Rose Law Firm. And I'm here on behalf of the Sanctuary Texas LLC, the owners of the property, to appear in favor of the creation of that pit. I've been recently engaged with them. Don't probably know as much about the project as you all do, as I understand, they've been talking to the city, or at least the mayor and the city staff, for about 16 months on this project.
How many months?
I was told that there's been discussions going on for in the neighborhood of 16 months. That's what I was told. It has to do with 64 acres. Apparently, it's in the ETJ of the city, about 265 lots. What I've been told is that during those discussions, they've thrown a number of things out on the table with the city. One was to have the property removed from the city's CCN and their ETJ, and that they had offered the city $500,000 to do that. In the alternative, they had requested the city create a pit, which of course is what generated the petition that's before you now. My understanding is what they're looking to do is to have the pit created, develop the 265 lots. They want to be a long-term watering sewer customer from the city, although I think they understand that probably on the interim, they may have to buy interim water from the city of Willam. But I know they've been stirring these things around for some period of time. Maybe it's not exactly 16 months. And I think they're at the point where they feel like they've got a fish or cut bait, and they need a decision from the city. And I think it's a corn toss for them. If the city wanted to take their payment and remove the property from their ETJ, that's fine. The city wants to go on and create a pit and develop in the ETJ, that's fine. But they've got to have some kind of financing vehicle to do their development. And their fallback position, if those two aren't available, is, as you know, they've also petitioned the city for consent to create a mud in your ETJ. And if the other two options aren't acceptable to the city, then I think they're tenacious to proceed forward to create mud in the city's ETJ, take control of their own water and sewer, and move forward with their development. So they're in favor of creating the pit. They would like to create the pit. I think their first two choices are options A and B that I went over. But they're really looking for some direction from the city. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
First thing I would say, I appreciate you coming out. It's hard to see this, but the property was sold in August. We've only been talking with them since about August. So I don't know where the 16 months came from. He didn't close on it.
I mean, it was August, but it wasn't like this. They didn't close on it, then walk over here and talk to us.
So August of 2019 is when they became the owner.
This is also the one with the platte that was submitted. It had lots of problems that were in multiple jurisdictions and didn't pass out.
Yeah, so it's been less than six months that we've actually been dealing with the sanctuary. 16 months is where that came from. So...
I'll tell you where the number 16 months came from. I was engaged about three weeks ago. So I'm getting all my information from the owners. They would have liked to have been here tonight. They were not available. The lawyer, I guess, that they've been working with, Mr. Ventura, was not available tonight. And so I volunteered to come in and pitch it. And so they briefed me on the history of it, and they said, you know, a year to 16 months. And when I said 16 months, I don't know. I don't know that it really matters. But I think the important things are that they were... I understand that they made two proposals to the city. One is to remove the property from the city's ETJ and CCN. And the other one is to create the pit. And they just need to get some direction from the city.
Well, at this point, my concern is that it's the same concern that I voiced to their agents, is that they have no utilities. They have no easements. They have no utilities. They have no utility providers. I don't know. They can't come up with any kind of probable estimates when they don't know the route. They don't know how many wells they need. They haven't done a well study. They don't know the location. They don't have any utilities or any engineering to back up this pit. It's only been four months, and they don't have anything to back up what they're trying to do. So what I think we need to do is, until we can get more information, the only document that they have submitted to this city shows water coming from a water system that can supply 10 connections. And you said 265. A water system, they're decertified. But the document they submitted shows service from that entity, which is impossible. And they show sewer lines crossing easements which they cannot obtain. And the owners have told them they will not give them easements. So I think they need to rework the engineering before we can entertain a pit. Right now, it's just not viable. There isn't even... There's no way to get there at this point. So I think it's premature. And after only four months, I think it's very premature for the pit. So I think what we need to do is we need to maybe continue this public hearing later at our next meeting, get some additional information, and go from there.
I think you need to see if anybody else wants to... Still a public hearing. See if you want to speak.
Oh, sure. Anybody else want to speak?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing until April 9, 2020.
I have a motion to continue in a second to continue the public hearing.
Is that a council meeting?
A council meeting. A council meeting, or April council meeting.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Yeah, who was the second? Yeah, all those in favor? Okay, all right, thank you.
And if I could add real quick? Okay, so it's going to be continued till April the 9th, and your issues that you want them to address with you are how to get water and sewer.
Are the same ones we've expressed to them once before.
And that's water and sewer?
Yes.
Anything else I need to convey to them? Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, what we have is... Okay, next up, we have consideration resolution... Okay, so let me skip the next one. Close the public hearing. Second?
No, we continue.
No, we're not continuing.
You have a second public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm getting the... I.D. Public hearing is scheduled by an opportunity for citizen comment on amending the comprehensive plan. So we have a comprehensive plan which governs the city, which is basically a master roadmap of where we think the future is going to be. It goes out about 20 years. And it deals with thoroughfare plan, a park plan, land use assumptions. Basically, it's a roadmap for any developer that if they were to come into town. It gives them an idea of who we think we are, where we're going, what our expectations are. It's kind of a guiding guide. It's a vision of the town. And typically, you update those about every five years.
Yes.
About every five years. Our last one was 2014. We did 2009 was the first one that we ever had in the town. A little late, but we had one in 2009. Then we did 14. So we're up on... We're going to do now one now, 2020. We're liberalizing updating. So over the course of probably the next four meetings, we're going to be having public hearings. And it's just working on this document. Again, it's kind of an organic document. The old one is up on the website. It's in the council packet. You can kind of see. But bigger cities would have a committee and have a citizen committee and get a lot of feedback and input and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, we're small, so we just... If anybody wants to comment, you can. But we're going to be working on that for the next three or four meetings. A little bit at a time. That's kind of cool. Okay? So I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. It's up on the website. I said it's actually pretty interesting because it shows a lot of, what, projects, Glenn?
Yeah, so in the end of it, or at the back of it, there's projects that we basically set goals for ourselves and projects we want to achieve. And it was kind of a nursing home, I'm looking at it. I think we've done a pretty good job of that. Now we're going to update it with some loftier goals.
So yeah, I mean, it's kind of a nice thing to set it out there in front of us to say, you know, here are the next five years, what we hope to do. Because actually, I think it's pretty... I think it was pretty fun we did it the last time. It was kind of nice to work through.
Yeah, I mean, I think previously it was like, let's do a water tank, you know, pressure tank. And now we're doing like, let's do roads. And so it's kind of nice to see this progress into larger project.
And so if you get a chance, and you get a chance to read it, it's actually a pretty... It's very... It's not a technical document. It's just like a roadmap. If you just want to get to know where we go, this is what you read. Okay. So there really is... Does anybody have anything to say?
No.
Can I get a closing of the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, motion and...
A second.
Matt's got the second. Okay, thank you very much. All those in favor? Now can I move on?
No.
All right, the consent agenda. We've got three sets of minutes. And the engagement agreement with S&amp;P Global. So everybody knows, we have to get a credit rating from S&amp;P. I've been spending the last two weeks with S&amp;P, back and forth on a lot of questionnaires and supplemental financials. I was here until 2:00 AM last night doing the latest round. But I think we have a conference call on Monday, which is with the New York folk. They'll be calling in. And that's our ratings call, where they get to ask anything. And then we'll know our ratings in about a week. So that's a contract. We have to basically agree with that contract to use S&amp;P to do it. So that's what the consent agenda is. All right, anybody have anything to add? Any consent? Anybody got any minutes changes? Semicolons, commas? Nothing?
No.
Nothing? All right.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Serena's got the second. All those in favor? All right, thank you very much. All right, next up, all right, agenda item number one, the resolution. Considering we're going to skip that. Consideration of the agreement with P3 Works. P3 was the pit consultants that were being paid for by the developer for us to create this pit. He has withdrawn and rescinded the reimbursement agreement to pay for the consultant. So we don't need the consultant anymore. So we need to terminate our engagement with the consultant. That make sense? Okay. I need someone to make a motion to terminate our agreement with the consultant.
Make a motion to terminate the agreement with P3 Works.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Matt's got the second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. All right, number three, discussion of concrete road project. What you've all been waiting for.
Is that a...
Yes.
Can you call up Matt?
No, I'm going, yes.
I didn't catch his vote.
Okay.
Somebody's moving fast. She's trying to cut it.
Okay. Number three, discussion of concrete road project. Okay. So lots of things on the roads. The final road design is complete. That's what these are, the final road designs. I'll be putting in the mayor's letter. In fact, we're going to put these on the front table so that anybody who wants to look at them can come in and look. We'll lay them out on the table. I'm typically around... I've been trying to show people as I've intercepted them at the mailboxes. I've kind of dragged them in to show them what's happening. There are basically three things in the plans. One is where the road is going. And you can see relative to the road that's there now, where it's moving. It's also one plan showing where the road is going to go up and down. Leveling of the road, kind of a vertical displacement. Another set of plans here details the demo, which is everything's going to be demolished during the road project. So it shows all 114 driveways, how much of your driveway we're going to cut off. Okay, that's in the demo plans. Some driveways are getting cut off further, not because the road is going there, but because the road is either getting higher or lower. And we need to go back up your driveway a little bit further to get the alignment right. If the road's six inches lower, you don't want to have a hump going in your driveway. So we've got to back it up to get the slope right. Okay? Linda Louden knows, because we messed up her driveway. We needed it in 2014. Okay, so the demo is there. It shows everything's being demolished. And you'll be able to see where it is relative to your culvert, if it's in front, or if we're going to take your culvert and replace it. Everything is being done. The demo plan's there. And then the final road plan, which lays out the drainage. That's in there as well. So basically, you can see everything that's going to come down the road. The plans are final. They're done. They were put up on CivCast for the companies to bid. So they're in the bidding process now, pulling down the documents. As of yesterday, over 30 firms had pulled down their copies of the documents off of CivCast. That's good for the home team. Relative to a normal rehab job, this is a rehab job where you're ripping out old street, putting in new. For the engineers, this is a big rehab job. Most cities don't do it this big. They pick one street and do one because they don't like ripping up and replacing streets. It's very... It can be discontinuity because people have got to go around. It's a lot different than laying a brand-new road. Laying the road through the woods, that's a different story. They'll blow and go when they do that. They don't have to worry about driveways and people's cars and all the logistics and all. So the fact we're doing over 15,000 feet of rehab means it's a big project for these companies. So that's good for us. So that's been pulled down. We have a meeting on... Is it Monday, Linda?
I believe so. Yes, it is.
So Monday afternoon, we have a mandatory meeting with all the construction companies. You're not allowed to bid on it unless you show up Monday afternoon. And that's a meeting where they're going to go over some minor details that basically allow them to ask questions. I've talked with Land Plan, and they've agreed to allow us to use the staging area over here on the other side of the street, on the opposite side, next to the ball field. We did that five years ago. They've agreed to let us use that again. So that will be the staging area, which means we don't have to pay them to rent land from someone else. That's good for the home team. We've also secured agreements down at the sewer plant, wastewater plant, to build our mountain and wrapping it around the sewer plant. Landowner down there has agreed to let us do that. They're happy that we're going to hide the sewer plant. So that's going to cut our haul-off costs by probably six figures. That now, because they're going to stockpile all the old road here in Lakewood Village and not have to take it to 380 or wherever they would go to dump it in a hole. So that's part of the pre-bid meeting. Everything else has been moving along. One of the items in here, we'll get to, is the... Where's Fugro?
Uh, F4.
F4? Oh, Fugro, okay. So the road project is basically moving ahead. Here's what the calendar looks like. It's under bid now. They will get final bids on, I believe, March 5. They will open the envelopes March 12. They will give us the recommendation. March 12, the bond underwriters will be here. March 12, we pull the trigger. Everything is lined up to do that. We are moving forward. And everything is lined up. Okay, so that is on the engineering side. I believe the latest plan on engineering is that we will do now, by necessity, Green Meadow will now be last because we're going to have to take the cement trucks to the sewer plant, or the dump truck to dump the old road. We're going to stockpile it and wrap it around the sewer plant, which means we don't want to be driving down parkwood or concrete street. So we're going to have to do some prep work on Green Meadow, but that now will probably be last. So that we will just... Because we're going to bring 800 loads of former road down that road now. That's a change from, I think, our original ideas. I got a... From the engineers, I have an exhibit of everybody who's got something in the way. So that letter will go out with the mayor's letter. So there are probably two dozen people that have something in the way of the road. And you're going to get letters from the city basically saying, we'll move it and dispose of it for nothing. You can move it yourself and pay somebody to move it. Or you can do nothing. When the road guys come here, they will demolish it, and you'll get a bill from the road guys. Basically, those are going to be what you're going to get from the city. It's primarily mailboxes. That's primarily what's in the way. There's some places that have trees. If you go down the hill, right down here at the bottom of the hill, across from mailboxes, and the hills have two Bradford pears sitting there, a foot off the street, they are gone. They know they're gone, and they're going to vanish. The second thing we have is we have a list of anybody that has items which are in the grading zone. So we're going to be regrading. We're redesigning the drainage for the city. We're actually going to do it right. We're getting rid of some drainage easements. We're getting rid of some pipes. We're getting rid of some drainage easements, we're getting rid of some pipes, we're gonna run the water the way it's supposed to go. And in doing that, some of the bar ditches have to be regraded. So there are some places where there are trees that are in the way of the grading. We've identified those. They're not in the way of the road, but they're still on city property, and they're gonna be affected by grading. So I have a list of those. I have a third list, which is everybody where you have trees which are near the grading area, and we're gonna disturb the soil. The tree can stay, but FYI, we are going to be disrupting the soil near your trees. Fourth list I have, and the final one, is there are a handful of places where we are going to have to go on people's property. To set the drainage right, or to lay drainage pipes, we're going to have to go on your property. Most of these are in drainage easements, like at the Lepleys, we're gonna have to go beyond their front property line with the drainage pipe, but it'll be buried. I believe also at the Mencofs, we're going to be going past their front property line with a buried pipe that will pop out past the property line. And I've got to, I'll be talking to those people to get their, their understanding of what we're gonna do. Okay, so that's it. We've started working, you'll see everything, a million flags running down Hyrings, that's the new water main, we'll be starting any day now. Today, I believe, we demoed the mailboxes.
Or...
Concrete's gone?
Half gone.
Huh?
Half gone.
Half gone?
Yeah.
Getting there.
Okay, anyway, so that's underway. The giant excavator is in town for a month, we're gonna be doing some excavating for the next month. So that's kind of the ancillary stuff on the road there. All right, as far as financing goes, we had multiple meetings with Sam Co., going back and forth with all the second and third round of financial disclosures. I went through the offering document, three rounds of that, that's about an eighty-page legalese document with lots of exhibits and financials, tables galore. I gave that to Eric as well. Eric Farrows is sick tonight, he's been looking at that too. So that's moving along. It's been, we got the final approval now. Financing looks, looks good. Really nothing left on that, other than just the conference call on Monday, and then we're, we're kind of good to go. We're just waiting on the fifth to open the envelopes. Looks like probably the road will work in March, beginning of April, we'll get the order to proceed. Just everybody knows, typically then, what the first thing they do is, they, they take out all the pipes that are underground. You can't put the road in until you get the pipes underground in. So they tend to do all the underground work first, to get that knocked out, figure that out, and then they'll start going down the road. Most common question I get, where are they starting? That's called, that's under what they call methods and means, under the contracts. We don't tell them methods and means. Here's the project, we're not gonna tell you how to do it. You do it however you want. So we cannot tell them the routing. We can veto the routing if we don't like it. So typically, as the road project will begin, they'll have opportunities to, to alter the routing, or to double lane things, or, and based on last time, we just do that on the fly. They'll come, and for some reason, they need to change the routing and do this street instead of that street. But I can't tell you which way they're gonna go. They started last time...
They started right here at the front?
Right, right at this intersection. They started at the very front. I would have thought they started at the back and moved their way to the front, they started from the back, so, who knows? But as soon as we know it, everybody will know it, and then you'll have plenty of time to understand the routine. But that's kind of it. Does the council have any questions? I don't think, no more trips to McKinney, we're done, we're done tripping. Okay? Anybody else, you, anybody have any questions? Anybody out, yeah, Carl?
Are we gonna be paving Lake Crest right here, or are we gonna wait till Land Plan is doing their thing?
I believe, I believe what we're going to do is, we're going to take Lake Crest around the corner here, and we may widen a little bit to allow the corner. This, this land where they're gonna be staging, there's a couple of lots here that is in no man's land. It's between the school board property and Sunrise Bay, it's cut off. But essentially, I believe we're not gonna touch Lake Crest until Land Plan comes in. It'll be part of Land Plan, because they're gonna sever Lake Crest. But I will tell you, we're gonna touch every single street in the city, because we've gotta now do all the approaches, all those transitions for every single street. Hillside, we've got Extend Shoreline, every single street in this city is going to get worked on, every one of them. So it is really citywide. Jeff, you have any questions?
Nope, I don't. I'm, I'm ready.
Ready?
It's gonna take a month or two, right?
They'll be here next Tuesday, if you want to tell them when to start, you know, but or next Monday, so. Okay, everybody good?
Yeah.
All right, it is, it is rolling along. Next up, consideration of engagement of FUBRO for materials testing inspection. This is an item we talked about in McKinney, where two options, one option is to let the contractor do his own quality control, and then the Kimbley Horn engineers would review that. Or the other alternative is for us to hire a third party that we hire, that will do the quality control. And just everybody, if you don't know or not, as they're going down the street, every so many feet, might be five-hundred feet or whatever, they have to pour like ten cylinders, concrete cylinders, and then the materials people break them, because it's gotta be like twenty-five-hundred PSI before you're allowed to scoot a...